Parkway Church of God for the invocation. Pastor Morris?
Appreciate the opportunity again and want to thank Mayor Jake Day and the city for recognition recently of our 100th celebration as a church in our community. Let us, let us pray. Our gracious God, we come before you this evening out of a heart of celebration. We observe this season of charitableness, peace, and joy, and we revere you as the creator of such gifts. Tonight, our city leaders will tackle an agenda that allows continued growth and positive direction for our community. We pray that you will enable wisdom to come from the information presented, that decisions would be made that would honor you and the people of our community. We pray for your favor upon these proceedings, and we pray, God, for your protection, for your provision, and for your peace upon our city residents and our employees. We ask these things humbly. We do so recognizing your greatness, your generosity, and your grace, these things of which we desperately need. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please rise now and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before Pastor Morris leaves, may I?
Yes.
Very quickly, I just want to say thank you, not only for the great service and ceremony on the day that we celebrated, but I also wanted to say thank you for your generous gift to the city of Salisbury that day. I was able to read the book, which will remain with the mayor's office. I hope that's okay. That'll be a gift that remains part of the city record. But I was able to look through that and see my grandfather's name in there probably 50 times in that large volume about the history of the church. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, and again, congratulations on a century of service to this community.
Thank you. Thank you. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Blake? Mr. Boda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Who is the motion? April. I have to get used to the voices now on different sides. Ms. Jackson, second?
My second.
Ms. Blake, great. Good evening, Mrs. Carter. How are you?
I'm good, and you?
Very good, thank you.
Very good. We only have two items on the consent agenda tonight, the November 18th, 2019 special meeting. It was the city organization meeting, the minutes from that, and the minutes from the November 25th, 2019 legislative session, where we had the swearing-in ceremony. And those are the only two items on the consent agenda.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Carter. At this time, we'll have a presentation of the FY19 audit and financial statements. Mr. Corddry? Come on, okay. Mr. Haney, you're going to lead us?
Yep.
Okay.
Myself and Leslie Michaelick are here once again. We were here last week at the work session to kind of give a formal, more detailed presentation of our audit report. Tonight, we're kind of just wrapping up the audit and going to go through the audit reports that we issued this year. So this year, PKS and company issued several reports on your audit engagement. The first report, which is found on pages two and three of the bond financial statements that you have in front of you, that's what's called our independent auditor's report. This covers all of your basic financial statements and your fund financial statements. And in that report, we issued, as presented last week, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that your independent auditor can issue on a set of financial statements. Along with that, and a report that you do not have in front of you, we also had to do a single audit on your federal grants, and as part of that, we issued several reports, one, which is the report under government auditing standards. That report's not really an opinion report, but it's a report where if there was any internal control issues that rose to a significant deficiency or a material weakness, it will be reported there. We're happy to report there was no issues that we had to report there, so there was no findings in that report. And finally, the other report that we issued related to the single audit and covering your federal expenditures that we tested this year, this is basically a test of your compliance with the federal grants that the city receives and expended funds during the year ended June 30th, 2019. Once again, we're happy to report there was no compliance findings in the single audit, and there was no findings to be noted there. So again, that's what the city is striving for. And with that, that is the presentation of our reports this year. As part of the audit, I would like to thank your finance department, specifically Keith, Sandra, and Olga, who really made the transition pretty smooth. First-year audit doesn't always, there's a lot more involved, kind of getting to know the client, things like that, so it was a really smooth audit this year, and that's a compliment to your staff for making that smooth. So with that, that's kind of my presentation of the reports tonight, and if there's any questions that have arisen from the presentation last week, we'll take those at this point.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a motion and a second to accept the audit.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. I think it's noteworthy, and I'd like to take a second just to say that PKS is new to us this year, and as the same as the previous two years with a different auditor, we have clean, a clean report, which is very rare, I will tell you. And it's because of the efforts of our staff led by Mr. Cordry and his group. Things have gotten a lot easier, a lot clearer, and simpler, as the budget has as well, and they're to be commended, and we thank you very much for doing what you do to assure us that things are on the up and up and running smoothly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, comment?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I just want to, one, thank the council for, I know that part of the audit process, as a former council president myself, is engaging with the council and understanding the council's perspective on the finances of the city and the financial processes of the city. But on top of that, I just, once again, and you did it, but I want to reiterate our thanks for Keith Cordry and Olga and Sandy and the entire team at Finance, the incredible job that you all have done to get us from a place, which was not a bad place, but a place where we did have quite a few comments that we had to address every year, you know, seven years ago to a place, three years ago to today, where there has been no comment and an unqualified or without exception clean audit. And that credit goes to the staff that's working every day on this, and proud that we have a finance department that is serving us well, serving the citizens well, protecting every single penny that we collect. So I want to say thank you one more time to them.
Very good. Okay, at this time, we have scheduled a public hearing on the Johnson Road Dirk-Widdison annexation, presented by City Administrator Julia Glanz. Anyone who wishes to or will speak at this public hearing, you can please stand and be sworn in.
Okay, readers, your hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
At this time, is there any comments from anybody? I'll call for a motion now to approve resolution number 2967.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake? Ms. Jackson? Ms. O'Neal?
Resolution number 2967, a resolution of the city of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly, southerly corporate limit of the city of Salisbury to be known as Johnson's Road Dirk-Widdison property annexation, beginning for the same at the point being south from a corner of the existing corporate limit of the city of Salisbury and also being on the westerly line of the near and near the northwesterly corner of the lands of Dirk-Widdison located at 927 Johnson's Road, continuing around the perimeter of said land to the point of the beginning. And I would just like to note that in Exhibit B of this resolution, we have to update the date, July 26, 2019, should be December 9, 2019, at the top, and then in the third bullet, that first blank should be November 12, and the second blank should be December 9.
Okay. Excuse me. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak may go to the podium. Seeing none, I'll call, I'll call the motion. I'll close the public hearing right now, and I'll call for the vote on resolution number 2967. All those in favor of resolution 2967, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. At this time, I'll call for a motion to approve resolution number 2968.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda? Ms. Glanz?
Resolution number 2968, a resolution of the city of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the city of Salisbury to be known as Johnson's Road Dirk-Widdison annexation, beginning for the same at a point south, being south of a corner of the existing corporate limit of the city of Salisbury, and also being on the westerly line of and near the northwesterly corner of the lands of Dirk-Widdison located at 927 Johnson's Road, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of the beginning. And again, in Exhibit A, the date at the top of the page should read December 9, 2019, and the third bullet point down, the first blank should be November 12, and the second blank should be December 9.
December 9, is that what you said, the last one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll call the motion. First, I'll close the public hearing. I'll call the vote on resolution number 2968 with the change, with the changes mentioned by Ms. Glanz. All those in favor, oh, let's call, let's have a motion. I did. All right. I did, I missed it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Glanz. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2984.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake?
Resolution number 2984, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for the development of 218 West Main Street, whereas Opportunity Street LLC has requested a waiver of the capacity fee for the development of 218 West Main Street, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits and the central business district, and whereas the city seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in the central business district, and whereas the city seeks to reduce the capacity fees for eligible development and redevelopment in the central business district by means of an equivalent dwelling unit, EDU incentive area, and whereas the proposed development of 218 West Main Street requires a total of 22 equivalent dwelling units of water and sewer service, and whereas the current capacity fee for one equivalent dwelling unit is $3,533, and whereas the capacity fee for 22 equivalent dwelling units is $77,726, and whereas the city council approved a capacity fee waiver process under ordinance number 2258 for development in the central business district, and whereas the director of infrastructure and development reviewed the request and has determined that the project is eligible for the capacity fee waiver, and whereas the mayor reviewed the request and supports sending the request to the city council, and whereas if approved, the EDU allocation for the capacity fee waiver is valid for two years from the time of the signing of this resolution, and whereas the property owner has the option to request an extension of the allocation for two one-year terms if approved in writing by the director of infrastructure and development prior to the expiration of the term, and whereas the allocated EDUs are assigned to the development of 218 West Main Street and cannot be transferred by the recipient.
Any questions or comments? For those who couldn't attend the work session, I believe we have 86 left? 86 EDUs?
Yep.
86 EDUs left. Any other comments?
Mr. President, is your, you know, to follow up on your, making that point last work session and now, is it your wish that the administration begin to develop a plan for what happens as we dwindle down to a smaller number?
Okay. I think that's worth doing. We discussed that a little bit at the work session, but...
We did, and I don't think we clarified intent, but if that's your intent, that's what we'll do.
And then we'll, then we'll discuss it once you come up with a plan.
Okay. Yep. I think, I think as long as the principles of the city remain focused on, you know, we want, you know, smart growth, revitalization, you know, from the inside out, less sprawl, less greenfield development than continuing the program like this makes sense, but I understand that we need to articulate what that looks like, so we'll start working on it.
Good, thank you. All right, this time, I'll call the motion to approve resolution number 2984. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2570 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Mr. Tillman?
Good evening. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY20 budget to appropriate a developer contribution for pedestrian improvements, whereas the Salisbury-Ycomico Planning and Zoning Commission has approved Coventry Plaza Shopping Center with a condition of pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Beagland Park Drive and Still Meadow Boulevard, and whereas the Coventry Plaza LLC is the developer of Coventry Plaza Shopping Center and will provide a contribution to the city of Salisbury for the pedestrian improvements, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development has determined that the cost of the pedestrian improvements is $27,200, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget is hereby amended as follows. Paragraph one, increase the developer reimbursements budget by $27,200, and increase the engineering construction budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2570, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2571 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Speak up. No problem. Ms. Gregory, thank you. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the roof replacement of Fire Station One project, whereas ordinance number 2482 appropriated funds for the FY2019 budget, and whereas it included a Schedule B in ordinance 2423, was the appropriation of the roof replacement Fire Station One, and whereas ordinance 2554 appropriated funds for the roof replacement Fire Station One in the amount of $50,000, and whereas unforeseen roof conditions have caused this project to exceed the initial budget cost by $1,431, and whereas the same, in the same bond, there are funds from other projects available to be reallocated, and whereas Section 7-29 Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, that the city's capital project fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. And the chart below shows that the revenues will be decreased in phone system, fire department, FY20 bond proceeds in the amount of $1,431, and increased in the roof replacement Fire Station One by $1,431. And then under the expenditures category, there's a reduction, again, in expenditures under the phone system, fire department, in the same amount, and a roof, and a reduction in the roof replacement Fire Station One construction by that amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2571 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2572 for the first reading. Mr. Boda?
Second.
Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY20 general fund to appropriate an additional position allocation for the hiring of a volunteer recruitment coordinator for the fire department, whereas the fire department has the need to hire a volunteer recruitment coordinator who will be essential to the continued success of the volunteer component of the department, and whereas this position will assist in the developing, leading, and implementing of a comprehensive recruitment and retention program, and whereas the volunteer corporations are strongly committed to the creation and implementation of this newly created position, are proposing a partnership that builds on the longstanding cooperative team effort that already exists with the city, and whereas there are sufficient funds available in the FY20 fire department budget to fund the additional position, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, that the city's fire department position allocations be amended by one, adding one volunteer recruitment coordinator civilian to the list.
Questions or comments?
Was that the AmeriCorps position? No? Okay.
Well, it was.
It was.
That's where we were originally going, and with, after further reflection, realized that that probably wasn't the best way to go.
Okay.
Thinking that it needed to be a full-time, or someone that has had major experience with the fire department to then convey what it's going to mean to be one.
And is there, is there a number attached to this position? I'm seeing...
No, no money from the city this year.
There's no money this year.
This is just approving the position?
This is discussed at the work session, so it'll be phased then.
Yeah, it's, the volunteers are picking up the first year, then it goes down percentage-wise each year until we pull up.
I see, 25, 50, 75.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2572 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2573 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY2020 general fund budget to appropriate funds for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, known as SCBA, whereas firefighters are extremely vulnerable to injury and death when fighting structured fires or working in hazardous environments, and whereas the fire department's current SCBA has reached its end of serviceable life in accordance with the National Fire Protection Association 1981 standard on, on open-circuit self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, for emergency services in the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, Section 42 CFR 84, entitled respiratory protective devices, and whereas the city of Salisbury Fire Department desires to remain compliant with generally accepted industry standards and protect its firefighting personnel from the elements of danger associated with interior firefighting by ensuring that their personal protective equipment is maintained at the highest standard, and whereas the fire department has the need to replace 90 sets of SCBA and 104 additional personal face masks, and whereas the SCBA replacement cost is $740,000, and whereas the FY2020 fire department budget does not contain an appropriation sufficient to cover the required expense, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget be amended as follows. One, increase the current year surplus by $740,000. Two, increase the fire department expense account by $740,000.
All right, for the benefit of those who were not present at the work session last week, this is a significant expenditure that was not in the budget because there was anticipation of getting, of getting a federal grant that we have received in the past, and we did not get it this time. We have no choice but to, but to authorize this, because all of the masks run out at the same time. And that's because of technology changes, and we understand. So at this time, if there's no, are there any questions?
May I provide one comment?
Sure.
Yeah, just, not to disagree with you at all, there, there is one choice, but the other choice would be to bond, to take on debt for the money. But the, you know, for two reasons. One, that would be more costly in the long run, and two, we took, we just put $2.4 million into savings. We have, we crossed the top threshold that the city has set for the first time in many years. We have healthier savings than ever, even after this, we'll be at our healthiest position ever. So for that reason, we have the cash on hand to spend and to get this over and done with, and we still remain in our best reserve position that the city's ever been in. That, that being the only alternative, this became the preferred.
Yeah, absolutely. The last thing we want to do is take on more debt, for sure. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2573 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2574 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY2020 general fund budget to appropriate funds for the fire department's vehicle repair account, whereas the fire department has the need to maintain its fleet by performing regular maintenance and repairs, and whereas the fire department has experienced a substantial amount of unanticipated repair costs, and whereas... amount of unanticipated repair costs, and whereas the fire department has reviewed the expense records from the last six years, and whereas the average annual expense for vehicle repairs and maintenance has been $168,262.34, and whereas to cover the current and expected cost for repairs, the fire department is projecting a shortfall of funds in the vehicle's account for the remainder of the FY 2020, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or approved by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget be amended as follows. Paragraph one, increase the current year surplus by $75,000. Paragraph two, increase the fire department expense vehicle accounts by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2574 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any requests for public comments?
No.
Comments from the council? I do have one. This is the last meeting that we will have before the holidays, correct?
Yes, it's the last meeting.
We have a work session.
Work session on the 16th.
So for those who don't follow the work sessions, or, I want to wish everybody a very, very happy holiday, a blessed holiday, and for peace, for sure, and for continued success in the new year coming up. So, Mr. Mayor?
Also, thank you to the Heath family.
Yes. You're very welcome.
Just, just one small comment, if I could. Donate blood. Donate blood. If you haven't donated recently, please call and donate blood. Our region is extremely short. Donate blood. Give a gift of life.
Good point. Okay? There's no other business. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.